Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for May 21st, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that everybody in the room please turn off or mute your cellphones or other electronic devices. And Trustee Penny Lampier will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Rob, you want to run through the quorum check?
Certainly. We're looking at the month of June, the 4th, the 11th, and the 18th.
Do we have anything next week, right?
It's an off week next week. All good. Okay. Thank you.
Good deal. Okay. Getting blurry already. Public comment. Now is the time of the evening where anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Village Council on any item that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to come on up to the podium and share your thoughts with us. And I see we have a taker. Pat?
All right. The trolley tour was last weekend, and the ladies who ran it did a double shift. Instead of one day with two trips, there were two days with two trips. And there was sun and rain and cold and warm, and they got through it all. But I wanted to tell you about the wonderful brochure that the village helped supply. It really is very colorful and a good start for the next tours that we take. Anyway, this was very successful, and let's keep on going with our celebrations of 150 years.
Thanks, Pat. The party continues. Good stuff. Anybody else like to address the council this evening? Come on up, Liz. Items not on the agenda.
Hi, Liz Conkle, 1303 Holly Lane. In the spirit of the green awards to be awarded later tonight, I wanted to mention that Go Green Winnetka is hosting its second annual Yards That Work Tour this summer. It's Sunday, July 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It highlights six yards in Winnetka. The winners of tonight's awards are both, have both been either, sorry, Ms. Hanley was part of the yard tour last year, and Ms. Thickele is part of the program this year. So Yards That Work is all about yards that work for their owners. It's not a garden tour. It's not a house walk. It's not about beautification. It's about working with the space you have and whatever your needs or issues are and addressing them in a sustainable, manageable way for the village. So I just wanted to mention the tour. Well, Matt also does a similar one, which is how we learned about it and started doing our own version of it. Theirs is the following Sunday, the 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. But again, just dealing with whatever the issues are in your yard, whether it's stormwater or native plants or pollinators, butterfly gardens, all of that kind of thing. So it's a really interesting opportunity to see what's really possible in a totally suburban setting.
Great.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Liz. Anyone else like to address council? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move forward with reports. Trustees, we'll start with Jack. Any report?
No trustee, I enjoyed the new chair presentation yesterday. I thought that was great. You guys did a great job.
Thanks. Andy?
The only thing I would report is on May 9th, Matt and I attended the Soul Smart Community Awards. Winnetka was awarded bronze community recognition. It was at Argon National Lab. The one takeaway that I thought was really interesting, and they broke down the cost of solar, and they compared Germany to the United States. And in Germany, the most significant part of the cost of solar installation is the hardware. In the United States, it's the administrative BS that is involved in putting solar in. And I thought that was pretty remarkable, that, you know, while our technology has driven down the cost of hardware significantly, the burden for someone or resident to come in, apply for the permits and everything else, is substantially increasing the cost of solar in a way that communities like Winnetka are starting to recognize and address, and that's part of the point of Soul Smart.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Well, the good news is we're addressing our new comprehensive plan, and hopefully we'll have some visionary statements regarding those sort of things.
Yeah.
Maybe even some actionable items for council.
Yeah. It was a great event.
Thanks, Andy. Bob, any report?
No report.
Penny?
No.
How'd it go on Saturday?
The community conversation was great and had some people stopping in to talk about anything from bikes parking on the sidewalks and providing some temporary stuff, racks until we get, you know, streetscape done across the village, to questions about stormwater and so forth. So it's good. And with the advent of the farmer's market season, we have the opportunity to park ourselves at the farmer's market every Saturday. So hopefully, we'll have more opportunities for conversation with residents. So look forward to seeing y'all there.
And better weather, for sure.
Rain or shine.
Village Attorney?
No report tonight.
Village Manager?
No report.
And Village President. The only report I have is trustee Colodarci mentioned, is last night, our stormwater team presented an intergovernmental agreement to the Board of Trustees for New Trier High School. We were well received and kindly treated, and it appears, though, that they are ready to move this first step of the partnership initiatives to a vote on June 10th. We didn't see any indicators that there would be any issues with the project to construct stormwater underground storage at Duke Child's Field, and we're looking forward to meeting with them again on the 10th and hopefully walking away with a positive recommendation. That's good news and a big step for the community. And that's the only thing I have on my report. Item number six, approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're slow tonight.
Welcome, everybody.
Hello. Maybe coffee instead of Gatorade. Consent agenda. I will ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Approval of Village Council meeting minutes for May 7th, 2019, regular meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated May 3rd through the 16th, 2019, in the amount of Resolution number R-50, 2019, trenchless relining of sanitary sewers for adoption. Resolution number R-51, 2019, brickpaver maintenance. Resolution number R-52, 2019, swank board appointments. And resolution number R-53, 2019, bulk rock salt purchase for adoption.
Great. Thank you, Rob. And that used up 105 pages of the packet.
It did.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Lampier?
Hi.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Crick? Yes. Trustee Colodarci? Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're moving right along. Item number eight, Environmental and Forestry Commission 2019 Green Awards. As part of the village's commitment to sustainability, the Environmental and Forestry Commission has created a green awards program. This is the third year that the awards have been presented, and the Chair of the EFC, Chuck Douding, will present the awards to this year's winner. Chuck, come on up. Is Chuck around?
Not yet.
I guess not. So Matt will stand in and move things forward.
Chuck's not here. Thank you, President Rinson, Village Council. I'll go ahead and just fill in for Chuck.
Sure.
I have some plaques I want to give out to attendees we have here tonight. I'll just read through them really quick here. Mercedes and Bernardo Thickele. If you guys want to come up here, I'll give you your plaque. Mercedes, 420 Birch, based on an application, we selected them for the category of water and stormwater. After their severe basement flooding in 2017, they constructed two commercial-grade pits jointly with three-some pumps and four backup batteries, raised their 10 window wells to the highest possible level, and covered them with new lids, and also ran alternative over-the-ground pump to disconnect, or to direct stormwater from the back of the house to a section of their yard. So here is your green award. And just a certificate to go with it. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, can I ask a question? I'm interested in how they learned how to do this. Who got them on the path to fix this problem?
Sorry, Mercedes, now you gotta talk to us.
Because you're not the only person that's probably had to fix this.
You know what? Google will do wonders for you, right?
Google!
So, pretty much. And my dad, who, I'm originally from Venezuela, but my dad and my mom, everybody in my family is a civil engineer, so they had a million ideas for me.
Wow.
So, and I implemented the ones that I could, you know, get my hands on.
It was self-done?
It was mostly me, I'll say. My husband, he just...
Not so much.
He was a tech.
Great. Good for you.
Would you be willing to answer questions, or you know, be a referee for citizens like me, maybe? Because some of the components of what you did are really interesting, and I'd be, love to talk to you about it and other people interested.
Yes, of course. Great. I have to say, I was also guided very well, so, by people at Brasky.
Oh, good.
Brasky. Boyd, he was very, very helpful, and he helped me through the process. And I just let, I just, I don't know, I just let the little contractors here. It was bits and pieces. It was not one of those, you know, like, he was waterproofing or something. I just had, you know, guys helping out in every little sense, so.
Awesome. Good. I like your entrepreneurial approach. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we may be looking for a project manager soon for a bigger project, and maybe we'll come knocking. Congratulations, Mercedes, and thanks. Mercedes mentioned to me, too, that they had just moved here in 2017, so this was the rude awakening, and welcome to the wonderful world of West Winnetka.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Matt, go ahead.
All right. And our second recipient is Amanda and George Hanley, if you guys want to come up, of 855 Auburn Road. The EFC selected them for the climate of category for constructing six vegetable beds, installing a hoop house, planting edible fruit trees and shrubs, converting to native planting, and incorporating green outdoor features such as additional LED lights and recycled furnishing. So, congratulations. Here's your award.
Thank you.
And a certificate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, yeah.
As I'm walking up, I'll say, the Hanleys, this is what they're being recognized for is only what's been done in the last five years for the goals of your award. They're in this entire yard, it's a garden garden. So on, you will do what they have done. Unbelievable.
I'm calling them, too.
How much for a tour?
It's free. That's what happens on our yard, on our yard that works for us. It's free. There's no cost to this. It's just a way to show again what you've done, so please come.
It's a labor of love, but I do dissent from what Liz said. All of these gardens are a thing of beauty, so.
They are a thing of beauty. It's not about beautification.
Yes.
That's not the focus.
But it, I think it is, and beautification.
Yeah.
It's a two for...
It's multipurpose.
Yes. It checks all the boxes. Yes. That's what I'm trying to say.
Thanks again, folks. We really appreciate it. Okay, back to me. Item number nine, ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number R-37, 2019, approving a banquet and reception hall at 915 Green Bay Road. At the request of the applicant, this public hearing has been continued, was continued at the May 7th meeting. Since two trustees are absent tonight, the hearing will be continued to June 4th council meeting so that the full council can discuss and vote on this request. And I'll just say that because of the uniqueness and the scope of this particular hearing, I really wanted to make sure we had everybody available to weigh in on this issue. And it'll also give the applicant a little bit more time to provide consideration for some of the questions that have come up in the interim. So we definitely will be hearing this on June 4th, one way or another, so let's look forward to that. Item B, ordinance number M-7, 2019, 976 Green Bay Road, Robbins Architecture Special Use Permit, up for introduction or adoption. I'm going to call tonight the night of the wayward special use permit, because it seems to be an overriding theme tonight. This request came about because an office use has been operating without a retail component in the retail overlay district. In 2014, the operator of the business pledged in a letter to the village that her intent was to have a multi-use business that included a retail element. It recently came to the village's attention that the retail piece never came to fruition. Therefore, this business needs a special use permit to operate in the retail overlay. And our Director of Community Development, David Shown, is here to review it. David?
Yes. So just quickly, so members of the public know, this property is in Hubbard Wood District on the northwest corner of, excuse me, Green Bay Road and Merrill. And as President Rinse said, the applicant was operating without a retail component, and as an architect office requires special use permit approval. So when this was brought to staff's attention and we approached the applicant, she decided to go through the process to seek approval from the council. The property is in the overlay district, thus requiring special use approval. You have pictures as well as a floor plan of the space in your materials, and the applicant also presented some more professionally done photographs. The Plan Commission considered this at its April 3rd meeting. They had received 15 emails in support of the use. Those are included in your packet. As the commission discussed the application, they did have the dilemma of considering it up after it had been up and running. The applicant explained the situation, and she's here today and can elaborate on what led her to initially have the idea of having a retail component and then not having it. Those in favor of the application found that it was an attractive anchored tenant for Hubbard Woods, that it was complementary business to the other business in terms of the customers, that it would bring to the space, and they found that the display windows and facade and lighting of the space was similar and compatible to what a retail use would be. Those opposed were concerned about another professional office occupying overlay district space. In the end, evaluating the application based on the standards, the special use standards, the commission recommended approval by a vote of eight to one. During the council's discussion of the overlay district and amendments, this was one particular issue that was discussed, was regarding non-retail uses and their display windows. So we have included as part of their condition, specific language saying that the property needs to be consistent with the special use standard, that the display windows, facades, and lighting are similar in nature and compatible with retail uses, and that the floor plan and photos that the applicant has submitted and are attached to the special use ordinance demonstrate that, and she must comply with that. So that condition is in the ordinance. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
David, why, what do you think, you weren't here, but why was this not identified as something that was not in compliance since 2014?
Well, I think, from my understanding, the practice was that if there was a use that an architect office, I guess, an interior design office that would provide a retail component...
Right.
The thought was that that would, should be allowed by right. We are changing that perspective in terms of moving forward, because that is a point of discussion that the commission has in terms of these uses, and is there an opportunity for that? So I can't explain why it took so long, other than it was brought to our attention that this use didn't go through the process and didn't have a retail...
I think it gets to the point that we all know that maybe we need to be a little more vigilant in monitoring when an applicant commits to something that it's adhered to, and if not, they come back. So I think, in some ways, you know, this is part the village and part the applicant and sort of just the situation.
Sure. But whether it's today or was three years or four years ago, she would still have gone through the process, yeah. Any other questions?
Is the applicant going to offer us any additional information on this? Can you tell us a story?
I assume you want to hear about this.
Please. Well, you know, I mean, as long as we're asking.
Want to hear about my day? I know.
Can you please tell us what happened?
Yeah, sure. I had an office down the street in Hubbard Woods, and it was back, so it didn't need the special use permit, because it was in the back of the courtyard. And I needed a bit more office space, and this one came up. And at the time, I had intended on doing some custom cabinetry that had to do with, that would sort of be associated with the office and potentially even custom hardware. And we got in the space and got a big project at Northwestern University that sort of was a, you know, even above and beyond just taking on a house or something like that. It was this whole kind of project that they were going to do, which was rehabilitating all these homes for Northwestern, and we were awarded that project. And Northwestern wasn't exactly like a slow client. They were sort of breathing down our neck to do like multiple homes, and we're a small office, so we just got busy. And then we did that actually up until last year, and then I guess no one said anything, and we were super busy. We still are super busy, which is why I'm here for the special use permit, because I would rather just stay in an architect's office than have two businesses.
Thank you very much. Okay, would anybody in the audience like to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back up here for discussion. Thoughts? Jack, you want to lead us off?
I guess I, in looking at what Louise Holland's comments were in the Plan Commission about the sort of steady eating away at the overlay district, and again, it's a beautiful, this business is beautiful. I mean, I don't have any objection to it whatsoever, but I think that the problem of the transformation of the overlay districts into what she's always been warning us about, which is professional buildings or professional spaces at ground floor, and we've become a kind of a village of office spaces, is a real risk. And I was going to ask David if you know the percentage of buildings within the overlay district that are exceptions, that would be not retail but would be a professional building like this. Is there any way to estimate that? Because I think that's becoming a, and again, I have no objection to this, and I'm not going to vote against this, I just, it's a concern.
Yeah, I don't have off the top of my head. I know during the special use study, we looked at that, but in terms of non-retail uses, I mean, because we have restaurants, we have beauty salons, we have, and retail uses, I, I'm sorry, I can't remember what the percentage is of non-retail uses.
Well, I think if you count up in Hubbard Woods, we have this. We have the orthodontics. We have the designer that was here a month ago.
Interior designer. There's another dentist.
There's a children's center, there is a, the...
Mathnasium.
Mathnasium.
Which is generating a lot of traffic, by the way.
We have the application for Boutique Bytes. Anything else?
So, we did, we really beat this to death at the study session, Jack, and I'm sure David could get you that information to kind of fill in the, you know, backfill the information. Yeah, I mean, it's a tough subject, and, you know, at study session, we really, it was actually a pretty robust conversation, and there's not any easy answers to it, certainly.
No, no. I'm trying to reopen it. I'm just curious.
No. I mean, with the changing face of retail, it's really hard to make a good prediction on what town centers are going to look like in the future. You know, as a town center landlord myself, I'm leasing a lot. I mean, my last, the last three leases I wrote were to physical therapy, to hot yoga, and to a workout center. So, and this is right in the heart of a very active downtown, and it's just the way the market's going. Would I love to see some other vibrant retail use in there? Well, yeah, I'd love to, but the reality of it is, is this is what the market is bringing, and these are the businesses that want to be in downtowns these days. So there's this yin and yang between what we as residents want and what the market will actually deliver us. And, you know, I don't think, there is no easy answer, right? I mean, it's just, that's why we have the special use thing, where we have to look at each one individually and try to weigh it against the greater good. So, Andy, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a beautiful space. I think it is complementary to the Hubbard Woods Design District in a way that is different than a lot of the other professional services, special uses that we've granted, whether it's a dentist office or something like that. So I think it fits in uniquely well, and I think, you know, certainly the input from local retailers corroborates that, and I think that's helpful. And so I appreciate that. I was a little concerned about the initial intention to open a retail store and then it not happening, but I understand how things happen, so that makes sense to me. Do you think it's important we not set a precedent, you know? But the circumstances make sense. Candidly, I drive by there all the time. I thought it was a retail store. It's so well-lit and everything, so it seems vibrant. So, not an ideal situation, certainly in terms of process, but I'd like to see it approved.
Bob?
I agree with Andy. I agree with the Plan Commission thoughts. Again, I think that this is just an example where we need to, you know, follow up on what's approved and why things are approved, and if there are any conditions to approval. But I agree, I think it's a nice spot and bad process, but, you know, I would vote to approve this as a special use.
Okay. And Penny?
I, you know, I am of several minds on this one. The space is beautiful, and you've done a really great job of, because I think, I would love to use what you have done as an example of, you know, how somebody who's not a retailer can set their, set their space up to be inviting, and, you know, as you said, that there are, you know, people stop and look at the photos. I mean, I definitely do all the time. And I think the more that we can do to make our window displays interactive, you know, that gets to it, and, you know, I know you want to keep it clean, but, you know, the more idea generation that you can do with that space, I think, is to, not only to your benefit, but to the benefit of the village in terms of, as people think about what they want to do, you know, in terms of residential renovation and in terms of home improvement and stuff like that, you know, as an idea generator, I think it's awesome. I, you know, as we're working really hard, for example, with Boutique Bytes, who isn't able to present tonight, but, you know, to get them to have a use that complies with the C2 overlay, you know, they've, she has gone out of her way to... the C2 overlay, you know, we, they've, she has gone out of her way to meet our request to have a retail portion to her business. So, I, I personally feel uncomfortable saying, you know, one person has to work really hard to meet our needs and to let another, another one slide when that was the general understanding. Given how everybody else has spoken, you know, I, I think that the sense, the sense of the board is clear, but I will say, and as we're looking at, you know, our other case this evening about special use has gone astray, as Chris, as you termed it, I, I am troubled by the inconsistency. I definitely want to keep a thriving business and I think it's really important. To me, this actually speaks to the need of, you know, we've talked about the possibility of requiring business owners to have, you know, come into the Community Development Partner, Department when they come into town and, and pay a small fee for a license, just to be sure that lines of communication are open and we understand and they understand what the rules of the road are in our community to prevent this from happening again. Maybe, maybe that's, this is what's being pointed out actually is, is what the problem is. So, I guess I don't have to solve the problem this evening, but anyway, that's, that's where I come at on this. I, I feel, I feel very uncomfortable about our inconsistency in this.
And actually, I agree with all of you.
[laughing].
Really, I mean, it's, you know, the fact that somebody comes in and gets, and gets permission based on, on promises and then, and then they don't, they don't materialize, it's not, it's not an easy answer. You know, clearly, that space at least is, I mean, I run by that every morning.
It's lovely, it, there's no doubt about it, right.
No, it's sparkly and it's nice and it's what I'd expect from an architect's studio, so, good job on that. And it never even occurred to me it was in the overlay district, to be honest with you, I mean, because it is kind of at the upper end of that, but I just always assumed it wasn't and never gave it a second thought. So, I'll leave it at that. All right, well, we have a couple of options available for us tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, we, we already asked for comments from the audience, so. If anybody has an interest in waiving introduction on this and moving right to a adoption, we can avoid having this back up here again. So, does anybody want to make a motion to waive introduction?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Trustee Dearborn? Yes. Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
No.
Okay, then we're going to go ahead and introduce it and then the applicant will have to return for, well, not have to return, but it'll, it'll come back in two weeks for adoption, so.
Oh, wait a minute.
At this point, so may I have a, a motion to introduce, ordinance number M72019?
So moved?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and we'll see this back in two weeks. Thank you very much. What does that mean?
Can you just give us an energy?
Well, yeah. Yeah, Peter, why don't you go ahead and explain? We'll have a, we'll make Peter earn his money tonight and explain to you exactly what the process is.
I'm going to lose my money later on.
Yes. No, it's a good question.
So, the zoning relief is by ordinance and under our code, an ordinance takes two votes to get finally approved. So, one of those votes just happened, the introduction, and the next vote will be for adoption at the next meeting. That's the standard procedure.
So, we were trying to get you out of here a little sooner by potentially waiving introduction and moving right to adoption, but since we had a dissenting vote, you needed, you need a majority in order to waive introduction and since we didn't have that, we just have to bring it back again and, you know, the thought is that maybe somebody will come up with a, with something, but.
Can I just have one comment?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like you to come to the microphone, though.
When we're, as an architect, when we're in a meeting and someone gives us a suggestion about something, a lot of times what I try to do is pull back and ask why, what it is they're trying to accomplish in terms of, you know, rather than telling me specifically, I want the dining room here, tell me what it is you're trying to accomplish and get to the root of what it is, why they made that suggestion. And I just feel that the, I guess the question is, what is it that is retail bringing to you, that you are wanting that so, you know, strongly? Not you, everyone, we all want a vibrant community. And so, I'm just thinking in terms of, what's the goal? The goal is to create a community where people go and it feels vibrant, a place where you see people, a place that you can call kind of your downtown. And the question is, do you have to sell something to create that or is there another way to do it? Because retail is changing and I think, you know, the concept of having a vibrant window and something that's beautiful, if all, if there is a bunch of, you know, whatever it is, businesses driving down the street that were well-presented and displayed, that you saw activity in and people were coming and going from it, whether or not you're selling something, it may not check that box, but it might check the box that's way up here in terms of what you're trying to create, which is a community. So, I feel that in terms of the broad picture of what the objective, objective is, we've accomplished.
Well, I will say that one of the voices at, at this dais argued that point inexhaustibly when we were talking about special use and about the idea of activating and creating interesting experience from the sidewalk and the like. And so, you bring up a good point that, you know, and that's what we struggle with, is, you know, clearly, the retail tax revenue that we get in this town isn't enough to make a difference one way or another, but it is about having a vibrant and interesting downtown and you bring up a lot of good questions. I do have one question for you. Are you a resident?
No.
Oh, too bad.
I live in Blanco. But I. I've been asked, actually. Anyway, that, that was my.
Too bad. Move to Winnetka and then, and then maybe you can join the conversation a little bit more.
I'm from Hubbard Woods, the Line District Committee, and we talk a lot about, you know, what we do there and actually, in terms of architect in terms of urban planning, it is something I've understood.
Yeah, well, we need people like that, but, so move to Winnetka and then we can really put you to work. Maybe you can earn some, some, some penance for your transgressions.
There we go.
All right.
Not worth it.
You're preaching, you're preaching to the choir, so, okay, well, thank you very much.
The healthy conversation is the important part, so, the feedback to us is, is really helpful.
Exactly. So, we'll see you, we'll, we'll see you back here. You'll be, should be in and out, but I, I can't say that for sure. Okay, item 11, or I'm sorry, item 9C, ordinance number MC2019, adoption of model building code and local amendments, and this is up for introduction. Village staff has been working to update Winnetka's building, fire, and life safety codes. Part of this process involves tailoring the codes to better conform to Winnetka's codes and processes. Here to review is Community Development Director David Shone again. David?
Yes, so, we're here to look at adopting model codes with any local amendments that we would like to have. It's been a process that we started over a year ago with many staff people and also with our consultant, SafeBilt, who provides us plan review and inspection services. Sal Gada is here tonight. Sal was instrumental in helping guide us through this process. So, tonight, we'll be talking about model codes. In the future, there are some other more local codes that I will come back to talk with you about amendments to those, but that'll be a, a few months down the way. So, just an overview of the model codes. Municipalities generally don't have the resources to develop their own codes, given the complexity of construction and development today, so we rely on national code agencies to do that. They generally will update their code series every three years and it's not unusual for municipalities to look at doing that every other code cycle, just given the amount of time it takes to go through the process. So, we are looking at doing that, updating to the 2015 International Code Council codes. We were at, we're currently at the 2009. So, the code councils and different organizations put out different sets of codes that communities can adopt. So, the International Residential Code, the IRC, relates to construction of one and two dwelling buildings, so single-family homes and duplexes. And then, the International Building Code, the IBC, is pretty much then everything else, commercial, institutional, multifamily, industrial. And then, the International Fire Code, the IFC, looks at regulating hazardous conditions to life and property due to fire, explosion, hazardous material storage. So, those, those three are kind of the, have been the, the main components of a building code and then, a community may adopt additional codes to go along with that and, and I'll talk about a few more of those as we go through the process. So, as we adopt the codes, these are national codes and so then, we may look at them to see how we may want to amend them to meet our local practices in terms of construction and development. So, in addition to the International Code Council, there is also the National Fire Protection Association that puts out a series of model codes. One, the one in the upper left, is a National Electric Code, which we'll be adopting, and then the others, the NFPA 101, a life safety code. And then, they also put out publications to help provide guidance in terms of how to meet those code requirements. And so, then there's a series of them dealing with alarm systems, sprinkler systems, sprinkler systems for single-family residential. So, we're looking to then adopt those as part of our building code. In addition to these codes that we adopt locally, the state then also has regulations regulating building activity. The state has adopted an Illinois Energy Conservation Code in terms of energy usage in structures. The state has adopted a state plumbing code as well as an accessibility code. All three of these, we, we have to adhere to and, and we adopt them as part of our code so that the public is put on notice that those are part of our regulations. So, why adopt more current codes?
I was just thinking that very question.
You're like, get to the point, David.
Cliffhanger.
Oh, speed it along. Because I know you're all dying.
No, David, I wasn't, I was, I was just thinking the same thing, so.
So, there are incremental improvements that are made to the codes regarding safeguarding health, safety, welfare of building occupants. And so, the, these code councils were, well, every year, they'll take suggested amendments and, and look at whether to add them to the code or not. It also, as they do that, look at allowing new construction materials and methods and incorporating them into it. And then, thirdly, insurance rates are partially based upon what's called the Insurance Services Office Ratings, or ISO, and part of their evaluation is what code series are you operating under? And if you're operating under older code series, you get fewer points and then, that then, fewer points means you get a lower rating, which then means increased insurance rates. So, for instance, right now, the Public Works Department is working through the Community Rating Survey, which is used to help determine flood insurance rates and given that we're, we kind of have older codes based upon their rating system, we would get a lower rating. And so, we're looking at adopting a newer code series to address that issue. The other point is, model codes provide uniformity. So, these are our neighboring communities and they have all adopted some addition of the model codes. They've adopted most of them and they're in different, they're in their own cycles. So, for instance, Kennelworth, I think it was just last week, adopted the 2015 series in talking with representatives from Glenview and Northbrook. They're in the process of, of going from the 2012 to the 2018, so that's six-year cycle. They're looking at adopting the 2018 codes. So, architects, contractors, they work across communities. So, at least using the model codes, there's a fundamental similarity and then there's some unique amendments that each community will have. So, the ordinance you have before you is looking at amending chapters of our code that deal with the model codes. So, we're amending four chapters and two we're deleting. We're deleting the two because of, for instance, the fire safety code chapter, either we've discovered in the, the model codes that issues are addressed now, or we've moved those items that were in that section and moved them into chapter 15.16, along with those other fire prevention. And that's more of a reorganization to try to centralize those regulations. And then, the chapter 15.56, we had our own swimming pool regulations and now we're looking at adopting the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, something we've kind of been using as a guide for several years now. And then, with that, we're moving the trampolines into the supplementary standard regulation. That's why we could amend that, or delete that, I should say. So, you have about 50-some pages of an ordinance. It seems like a lot and so, I just want to go over three basic types of amendments that are in there. One are administrative amendments, so they're model codes, so they're very generic, so a lot of the amendments are applying then our local regulations. Who's the building code official? Who appoints the building code official? If there's an appeal, where does the appeal go? So, those, there's a lot of amendments that as you've read through this, you'll see it's like every model code, similar language. And then, we've done some reorganization, as I mentioned. Then, the model codes will also refer to, you need to comply with a certain other model code. So, often, in the IBC, it'll talk about needing to comply with the International Plumbing Code. Well, in Illinois, we're not governed by that code, we're governed by the Illinois Code, so there's amendments in the code dealing with that. And then, the last group, so those two, there's a significant number, as you've read through it. The last group are more the technical or policy amendments in which we've made because of local practice. So, I'm going to just run through some of them, I'm not running through all of them. In terms of the International Building Code, we've amended, the other thing I would note, so that it's clear to a reader, we will reword that entire section we're amending, even if we're adding just one word. So, it may appear that there's a, oh, wow, a lot of amendment, it's really in one section, we changed one word or we added a few words. I mention that here because in elevator size, we're using the model code language, but then we're adding some language to make sure that at least one elevator will accommodate an ambulance stretcher and emergency responders, wanting to make that clear. International Residential Code, looking at basement escape openings, so when someone is finishing an unfinished basement, when do they need to provide an escape opening? So, if they're providing a sleeping room, they must, and then, if they're finishing off more than a third of the basement, they also must provide a basement escape opening. Again, that's for safety, both for an occupant to get out and if necessary, a firefighter to get in. With photovoltaic or solar power, there's more in updated regulations regarding that and we find that in the IRC. And then, just want to talk about one and two, family dwelling automatic sprinkler requirements. So, a few years ago, and in the 2009, it had So a few years ago, and in the 2009, it had, the model code has a requirement for the installation of automatic sprinklers. The village at that time excluded that requirement and then listed some other things, kind of sporadic throughout the code that would then need to be done. What we've done is, we've continued to provide the option for someone to not have to sprinkler their home if they meet certain conditions. We've tried to organize the bulk of them in one location. There are a few scattered throughout the IRC. All of these look at slowing down the spread of the fire so that an individual can get out of the structure. Again, another key aspect of this is that homes are required to have smoke alarms. And that's the key, one of the keys is when someone's asleep and unaware, to get them up aware and out. And that these additional requirements, well, the goal is to slow the spread of the fire so they can get out. So again, someone can still, if they wish, install sprinklers in their home. It's just if they do not wish to do that, they have an option. And that's a continuation of the policy that was adopted in 2009. Illinois Plumbing Code, just to mention that the state has to approve our code amendments, and that has to occur before the council takes action. The state has reviewed them and has signed off on them. Once the council approves them, then we need to record them with the state. The local amendments in there reflect our current policies regarding materials that are allowed. And we just tweaked the language regarding overhead sewers to make clear when installing overhead sewers is allowed, or is required. In the National Electric Code, we made a few changes. One, again, these are safety issues, to make sure when safety, our first responders are going, the fire department is going, to try to make sure we understand the electric service into a building. And that is, when combining multiple spaces into one, the new space can only have one service to it, so when it's disconnected, we know that the power is off in that space. And then dividing a space into multiple tenant space, each space needs to have its own service. Basically, what we're looking at is that wires aren't crossing between units, that we want them separated. We codify our minimum service size, and our practice has been to require external disconnects for all buildings and structures, single-family homes, as well as commercial buildings. That continues, and we provide an exception for larger services, for larger buildings like the one Weneka site would have something interior to the structure versus exterior. So we provide that exception. Regarding property maintenance, yes?
And Weneka is a good example. And by service, what you mean is each space has to be, let me understand this. It doesn't mean that each individual space will have a separate external service, but they'll be separately metered, and from that standpoint, they're considered separate services?
Correct.
Because obviously for Weneka-
It's going to have one.
You're going to have ten or twelve retail pieces there, so they'll go into a CT cabinet, it'll get split, and then you'll have separate meters for each space. And that's considered a separate service?
Yeah.
So it isn't, okay.
It's more of not wanting them crossing between spaces.
Right, I understand.
Yeah. And then the Property Maintenance Code, the village adopted it for the first time in 2012, adopted the 2009 edition. When the village adopted it then, it applied to all buildings except buildings within the single-family residential districts, condo buildings, and townhomes, or one or two family residential buildings in the multifamily or commercial districts. So basically, I mean, if I'd summarize this, it was not to apply to owner-occupied units, but to rental units, it would apply. Also, at that point, the code specifically was amended to state that enforcement would be complaint-driven, that the village wouldn't have a policy of sending an inspector out looking for violations, that it would be complaint-driven. And one item I would note is eliminated the exterior structure standard, which states that peeling, flaking, and chipped paint shall be eliminated and repainted. So that wouldn't be a violation. And there was concerns that we would be citing people for peeling paint on their homes, and that that's something we shouldn't do. In those communities, the nearby communities that we've looked at, no other community had the exception in terms of excluding owner-occupied homes. I would note, one of the communities hasn't adopted the Property Maintenance Code, but all of the others have, and none of them have that exception. And then in terms of the peeling, flaking, and chipped paint of those communities who have adopted the Property Maintenance Code, Kenilworth and Weneka are the two that have excluded that as a potential violation. Everyone else has not amended that. And the community that hasn't adopted the Property Maintenance Code does have in their nuisance standards, or property maintenance standards that they've adopted, that peeling paint, excessive peeling paint, would be a violation. We're asking that the council consider applying the Property Maintenance Code to all properties in the community. Right now, we're using the nuisance regulations that have very general and vague language. It's a little more challenging to use. Here's a property in question that the village has dealt with, and it took some time to deal with. Here's another property in question that had property maintenance issues. And often, these homes are occupied with individuals who have additional issues in terms of maintaining their property, whether it's age or other issues. So what we have before you is that the code would apply to all residential and non-residential properties. The enforcement would remain complaint-driven, and how currently written, that peeling, flaking, and chipped paint remains not an enforceable item. So that's how the ordinance is currently drafted. Since we adopted a model code series, the International Code Council has separated its existing building regulations from the IBC and has put it into a separate code. So we are going to now adopt that existing building code, which provides a designer the option to use it, to design it. The existing building code provides them with alternative paths for compliance. And in this, the bulk of those amendments are those administrative or other adopted model codes. Just to note, in our ordinance, we're stating the 2015 Illinois Energy Conservation Code, the state is in the process of considering adopting a new code. And how we've written the language, we would automatically adopt any updates that the state makes, and the state recently adopted a new accessibility code. In terms of swimming pool and spa code, this would regulate private swimming pools. The state regulates public swimming pools. These regulations used to be in an appendix of the International Residential Code. It's now a separate code, and we're going to adopt those as our regulations. And just one thing we would note, our local practice has been to allow an existing fence or building on adjoining property serve as a barrier, and we'll continue that option. If that barrier should be removed, then the property owner, the pool owner, would be responsible for installing a new barrier device. In terms of fire and prevention, fire prevention and life safety codes, just note that we've adopted some regulations of food trucks in terms of fire safety issues. And as I previously noted, we've relocated some amendments from the chapter we're dividing to that code. The last item here I would mention is, the village had adopted specific regulations regarding air conditioners and freestanding cooling devices, eight tons or more. This had to deal with noise. And the requirement was that with each installation, they would have to submit plans to show in terms of how they would handle the noise. And what started to happen was the recommendation that these professionals would have in their reports they would submit, would be to mitigate the noise by installing solid wood or fence, a solid fence around the equipment. Well, over time, that has just become our policy of accepting that without a study. So now we're looking to codify that practice of requiring the installation of a solid fence or wall for those types of devices. The last thing I would note, and we need to make an amendment to the ordinance, is, as we did last time when we adopted the new model code series, we provided everyone with sixty days' notice, so it would go into effect sixty days from the date the council adopts it. So that gives everyone proper notice, some time to start working under the 2015 code series here in Weneka. So with that, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Have any other guys?
I have a couple. And again, I guess this shows how warped I am, that I actually thought this was kind of interesting reading. But anyway, thank you. I know this takes a lot of time to get through, so. I had a couple questions. One relative to the mechanical nuisance. And we've talked about this a little bit. I was, again, on the council in ancient history when we put in the ordinance about the eight-ton air conditioning units and the nuisance that was created by the amount of noise. And I think now this applies to generators as well, right? But you know, there are other kinds of mechanical devices, you know, exhaust fans and whatnot, that can cause, that can cause difficulty in the residential side. And I was looking at, for the mechanical code that's being adopted, it wasn't clear to me. It says that there's a clarification of nuisance to public nuisance. Does that just refer to exhaust systems from garages, from, you know, commercial building garages? I wasn't sure whether that just applied across the board to any mechanical system?
Well, the mechanical systems for a single-family home are regulated under the IRC.
Okay, so that'd be the residential code and not the mechanical code?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, I don't know, just as, you know, technology provides new things for homes and whether there's sort of a, there can be a blanket, or it can be clearer in terms of if there is a difficulty that one homeowner, you know, in terms of a noise generated by a system, where would that fall? How do we, how do we look at that?
Well, I mean, there's two approaches. One, it could be the, it could be a noise standard-
Yep.
-in terms of the noise level that any property can generate, no matter what the device is.
Right.
Or it could be to try to address the specific device that's causing the specific issue.
Right.
So what we did last time with the air conditioning-
Right.
...and cooling devices was that we identified a device over a certain size-
Right.
-that was causing an issue, and then came up with a standard for it.
Right. You know, and maybe this is a conversation for another evening, but it's kind of like the, you know, the light spillage in terms of, you know, the lighting and the, you know, uplighting and stuff, landscape lighting. How is it that we think about the impact of, you know, one piece of property's use and their impact upon their neighbors? So maybe, should we talk about this another time? Yeah. So, but it just, it's a nice conversation.
Okay.
Okay. The second one is relative to the adoption of the Maintenance Code for residential properties. And I'm in favor of that. I'm curious about the complaint. I mean, does a complaint have to be a neighbor, or how does that, is that just somebody? I guess the question is, under what circumstances can that be brought to the village's attention?
Typically, it's an outside party that will bring the complaint.
Do they have to be formally affected, or?
No.
Okay. It's just it's brought to the attention of the-
It could be a phone call, an email.
Okay.
It could be, hey, you need to check out this-
Okay. It doesn't have to be like a formal, okay, got it, thanks.
It could be anonymous.
Great. And then finally, relative to the peeling paint, I agree that, you know, just sort of the normal wear and tear on a house. But if things get extreme, you know, I mean, that can be an indication of bigger problems. So I don't know if we can adopt a standard that would be, you know, because it, you know, the unsightliness and disrepair of a house, if it's painted, affects their neighbors, so. Just a question.
So within the Property Residential Maintenance Code, there are other standards, specific standards, that you can enforce beyond paint?
Beyond paint, correct.
Paint is one indicator, of course, but if the paint is peeling and it goes for a long time, there'll be other things that-
Yeah, and-
Would happen.
...disrepair, so it would be, sorry. So it would be, what, rotting wood, or, I mean, how?
Yeah, it would get to that point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That the wood is no longer protected by the paint?
Got it. Okay, thank you. Oh, I agree. I mean, I think that's a great move, so thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
So in terms of the Property Maintenance Code, suppose that you have a, the offender, the person with the property in violation turns out to be an older person or somebody with extremely limited income points. And we come to start demanding that they make changes that may be not financially possible for them, or there's a complaint against them, then we become involved in policing something along those lines. What's the thought of how the village operates in a situation where if there's a complaint that brings us into contact with somebody who's compromised?
Sure, sure. So we'll take efforts. There are a couple of organizations that have some resources to help individuals that may have limited resources. There's also, excuse me, we'll work with the police department as a social worker to help identify family members, to work with individuals who may have issues, hoarding issues, developing into unsafe, unclean living environments. So we will make those efforts to reach out to family members through the assistance of the police department to identify opportunities to assist those individuals.
How would our power change as a village from what we have now? How do we enforce these standards now versus how would we do it under the Property Maintenance Code? It seems like we've become much more involved in policing people under the Maintenance Code.
I don't think we've become much more involved. We have more clear tools because we become involved. And it's, the language we use under the nuisance regulations become, they can be challenging to try to address a situation. But we still have the concerns and complaints from the neighbors regarding the conditions of the property.
Is there any concern that you might become part of a dispute between neighbors by allowing more standards to be applied, that suddenly the village can be involved in a tit-for-tat with neighbors? Oh, he's got his laundry sitting out on his back porch. Oh, she's got, you know, her cats digging in the yard. You know, the different kinds of things where suddenly you're stuck with more rules to interpret and to potentially determine whether or not you have to impose them. and to potentially determine whether or not you have to impose them. My concern is there might be too much government involved in something like property maintenance simply because one person's pink flamingo is another person's eyesore. You know, I mean, it-
Sure. Let me try on this one, then maybe you can help-
Sure.
-wrap it around. Regardless of the standards that are on the books, the village will be involved because residents will call about concerns. We effectively use good judgment by kind of peeling down, no pun, getting down to the real issues at play, those that we can enforce and those that we can't enforce. The way the nuisance code is set up now, it is very limiting when we have a severe condition. And we had a chance to look at, you know, over the last 10 years, there's been 13 to 15 properties of similar type and condition that you saw on these slides where the nuisance code took, made it take much longer to bring it to a successful resolution. So it essentially gives us more opportunities to address the problems that are brought to us regardless of what is on our books. The nuisance code simply, I mean, we've had our village prosecutor ask us several times to look at the property maintenance code as an additional mechanism to deal with these problems. So it's not, I understand what you're saying, it'll be more government, it's actually helping us to be more effective with the problems that come to us.
Is it necessarily better that we're more effective in terms of this interference with people's personal liberty in essence?
Yeah.
Again, I realize that we are talking about having, you know, one person looking in another person's junk pile.
Right.
But a lot of times, it does put us into a position of being-
Right. So just to give you a flavor, we're talking about holes in the roof with raccoons nesting. Those are the types of issues that we're struggling to deal with. We had a piece of property, there was a piece of property on Brier that was essentially abandoned and had eight feet of water in the basement. And the nuisance code simply took too long for us to bring it to a successful conclusion. So we were using, as David said, the township, the social worker, trying to find families to bring this problem to a close or at least get the resources to bear to fix it. So this is something that's come along, it's, it's, it's an issue that where it's due.
The nuisance code as well, because I've been involved in some of these, it's extremely subjective. And I have found in some of the matters that have come before us, that makes it more difficult. So we're in the middle of it, but we lack clarity. I can think of, to your point, yes, there are situations where neighbors conspire to try to put us in the middle of the fight and we resist that and try to stand on clear standards. And where we struggle is when we don't have the clear standards. That was certainly an issue with the nuisance code in at least one case I can recall. And we're trying to explain to the two neighbors why what we were doing was fair and neither side was really convinced because the standard was so loosey-goosey.
So we amended it.
So we amended it, yeah. So, you know, from that perspective, I think there is a value to the clarity.
Well, I guess what I'm thinking is, I had a dispute with the builder building a house next to me. And they took down a small house and put a big house on. And they put in forced air heating and for the boiler and for the furnace. And they aimed the exhausts right into my bedroom. And it sounded like a pool pump going on every 30 minutes at an irregular basis. And it was terrible. And I went to the village, actually, the police came over and told me to stop yelling at the, at the builder. And then I went to the, I went to the village and I said, look, I've got, you know, there's got to be something you can do about this. It's a noise violation. I have a noise meter. I can stand in my room and then, and the decibels get up to 60 decibels, you know, on a quiet night, jumps me out of my bed. I live with, my windows are open. And I went to the village, the village said, sorry.
Well, that gets to the point that I was asking about earlier relative to the mechanical code and in terms of, you know, the impact of one house on another. But I think this, this gets to where things are in disrepair and it's causing a public health nuisance. So, for example, tall grass, yeah, tall grass, you've got critters living in there, or you've got a house where you've got raccoons or the termites or whatever. So where the deteriorating elements of the house are impacting the-
What I was getting at is that the village, given the state of the law eight years ago or whenever it was, said, nothing we can do, you've got to file a lawsuit against the developer to try to force them to change the, to modify the nuisance. So I had to file a lawsuit and incur an enormous amount of money to attempt to get the builder to change this so that it didn't ruin-
Right.
You know, they weren't that far, it was only 25 feet away based on an old lot. What I'm concerned with is if we get a, we get the same kind of a property maintenance code with all of the rules and regulations and then the village goes, no. You'll have to file the lawsuit which says, you know, an individual can file, can sue to enforce a village ordinance. And if we put in all of these rules and regulations and the village steps out of it or doesn't become involved, you know, are we creating an expectation by people that these are real rights, that the village will help them enforce, and then do we become a part of that process? I mean, I was stuck screwing around with this, you know, and I got about a 25% solution, you know. So to me, I'm like, well, I learned my lesson, you know, get earplugs or move or something like that. Are we going to be that way? Are we going to be stuck with that?
Well, I think at the end of the day, we have to rely and trust on those that are enforcing this to make the best decisions and guide their subordinates in finding suitable outcomes for these sort of things. And in the event when somebody is obstinate or clearly somebody is running afoul, that they have some tools to be able to compel them to rectify it. But at the end of the day, Jack, I think, I think the bottom line is that if you can't trust the folks here in Village Hall to be doing the right thing, and of course, you said it was eight years ago, and there was somebody different in David's office, there was somebody different in Rob's office, or Rob had just showed up on the scene, and the people underneath them were different. And, you know, clearly, the talent and the tenor of the service that's being provided here at the village is much different today. And I think, I think we need to be able to rely on the fact that the enforcement will be done in a manner that is consistent with the community values and also consistent with principles of fairness. Certainly, it's not going to give you any, any recompense relative to a unruly builder who decided to do that. But the idea is, is to give them the additional tools that can help, help them leverage into suitable compromises and solutions. Right now, for the property maintenance code, they have nothing. And alls you have to do is take a stroll down Blackthorn and knock on any door there, any door, and talk to those residents about what they think about the village's ability to affect change when they had a real problem there. Raccoons and roof falling in and overgrown grass.
What else?
Skunks.
Skunks and hoarding.
Hoarding, all of it. And I think the key, the key principle to this is to make sure that we have the ability to navigate those things with, with a little bit more horsepower at our disposal. It doesn't mean to abuse it, that's where the trust comes in. We have to trust the people, that Rob and the people that are working for him are going to enforce this fairly and not going to use it as a blunt instrument, but are going to use it as a surgical tool to take care of problems as they arise. So, you know, it was a big deal when this thing came up in 2012 and, you know, all sorts of gnashing of teeth of all the horrible property rights that were being trampled on when this came into play. And that's what pulled the peeling paint out. And clearly, I think this is a step in the right direction and it's part of a progression. And to me, you know, pulling the peeling paint out is the sort of thing that the community would expect. I do think people, after what I've been listening to for the last three years now, that people expect us to take care of these problems for them. And an unsatisfactory answer is, well, the code doesn't permit us to do that. Or we have to wait six months for it to really get bad and start spilling out onto the street before we can come and enforce. So I think we've got to, we've got to look at it from the eth standpoint because clearly we can project into, into, out there into the ether, any sort of problem. And imagine the worst possible outcome. But the way we get good outcomes is through, is through thoughtful enforcement and having the effective people to, to engage at the street level and take care of things. So-
Yeah, I'm not saying that I had any problem with the village's response when I came to the policy. And when they explained to me, this is, you don't get, you have to do it yourself. That was, okay, well, if nobody else is getting it, I'm going to do it myself. I didn't, I wasn't pointing a finger at the village and saying, bad village.
It's a sad statement to think that our village would compel a private resident to litigate. I mean, that's, that in itself is sad. I would rather give them all the tools in the world to avoid having that conversation and providing that sort of advice to any resident.
Yeah, as I said, I'm just, I'm worried that it will put the village in the position of becoming a weapon of potential-
I wasn't thinking when I put two lawyers on that side of the table.
It's good, it's fine, don't worry about it.
Sorry, I'm really sorry. Have you got anything to say on this?
Just, I'd like to, just have a second, yeah. First of all, this was clearly a collaborative effort and I appreciate that and so on. And I, like Penny, I, I did try to read through it. I did not find it interesting. So I was, I was waiting for David to really bring some interest to this topic and you did the best you could. It just, it seems to me, and Chris, I, you know, I think this is the first I've seen this process, okay? And to me, it feels like, and I, again, the lawyers would be better on this, but this feels kind of like an important topic to me, like there's a lot going on here. And maybe to Jack's point a little bit, maybe the law of unintended consequences, that I don't have any idea. It just, it seems to me there should have been a little more process or introduction of this topic, whether it's a study session or something. Because quite honestly, you know, I can vote for this, but I don't really know whether all of these are good or can reverberate back to us in ways that we don't, aren't aware of. Other communities are doing it. I don't know if that's a reason to do it. But this doesn't feel like a rubber stamp topic to me at all. So, you know, maybe they're all good, and I know you've given a lot of thought to it, and I do trust the village officials to enforce things properly. But there just seems to be a lot here that, you know, can have some impact that we really haven't talked about much. So I, I don't know, just doesn't feel very right.
Yeah, and Bob, you make a good point because it's, a lot of this stuff is highly technical and really beyond our pay grades. And that's where we have to rely on, if you notice, the fire department is here this evening as well, and we have our consultant here. And the reason for that is, is because they're the technicians, right? I mean, I deal with this stuff all the time. And alls I know how to do is find my way to the right chapter and verse when I have to fight with the building department about something.
But why not have a conversation about this where there can be a little discussion on particular topics? I mean, Penny brought some up, Jack brought some up, Andy likes them. I mean, there seems to be a lot of material here, and I'm not trying to push it off or whatever, and it only comes up every three to six years or whatever, so it's not like it's, but I guess if I had received a little more background on this, a little more-
It's sort of like the budget. Yeah.
Right, but you understand that the stack of code books that this references is this big.
I'm not going to read the whole code book, but I'm going to synthesize it to hear the key issues and then we could sort of talk about it.
Well, I think, and we are, and that's, you know, what I asked David to do, and I'll say, this is where I weighed in because I know how painfully dry, boring, and, and just technical this all can be, that I asked him to synthesize it down to the issues that we would need to speak on. And the property maintenance code was the one that I felt was pretty important because it is a big step.
I agree.
I mean, talking about the state plumbing code and the amendments to it, or the national electric code, I mean, you know, I don't see how any, how we are going to add anything to the integration of those documents. Or to the fire sprinkler code, I mean, this has already been vetted. And trust me, if it was up to the fire department, we'd be, we'd be sprinkling the sidewalks out on Main Street. Honestly, it's just, that's the way that-
I agree.
So, so those battles have already taken place in the back room. And this is the, kind of the, the product of all of that back room arm wrestling that's going on to make sure we get where we're going. But if you guys want to kick this, kick the can down the road and, and burn up a study session talking about building codes, I'll be happy to do it.
Is this up for introduction or what?
Just introduction.
Yeah. Chris, is it possible to carve out like the property maintenance code where there might be more concern?
I'm somewhat resistant to do that, Jack, only because it's going on, this has gone on for a long, long time already, and this is the time to do it, to have it integrated. So, I mean, if, if-
I don't mean carve out forever, but I mean for, you know, just because if there are more questions about the property maintenance code than there are about the other amendments.
Well, it's kind of why we were here tonight. I mean, it was on the agenda, it's been in your packet since Thursday, and, and I thought it was the one thing that would be a point of contention. So, I mean, I'd rather see you guys fight it out now and make a decision one way or another. We have a lot of other things on board on the pipeline already on the study session. We have streetscape coming up again. Stormwater is going to be taking up a lot of our time this summer with a lot of important issues to deal with there. But if you want to kick the can down the road, I don't think we're doing David and Rob a service by doing that because they put a lot of work in to get this thing as one united package.
As I say, I mean, it's, you know, it's just, I think-
But I'll defer to what, what, what you four think because-
I'll tell you my-
At the end of the day, you have to vote and I get to sit here and listen.
My thought is, all the technical stuff, this is the second or maybe third time I've approved one of these. I'm not going to get into the minutia. I think there is a lot of value to us being up to date on the most current codes. And so I think we had to get that done. On the maintenance code, you know, I'm typically strongly in favor of not interfering any more than we have to with residents, but I have confidence in our enforcement team. I think we do have a problem with a few zombie properties in the village, and we have lacked the tools to deal with that. I, I'm sympathetic to the concern about let's not us be the thing that pushes someone who's already at the edge that much further over. That's where my confidence in our staff is important. One thing I might suggest, so I think we should introduce it, one thing I might suggest is that we have some sort of hardship appeal process or some sort of appeal process to this council on enforcement of the property maintenance code. I don't recall how that works. It's been a while since I've looked at how that process works. But it seems to me that the main resistance or concern that we're hearing here, it's a policy concern about how this affects individuals, that's an extremely difficult discussion to have in the abstract. And I'm not convinced that it's ever going to be a concrete issue that we're going to frankly have a, have a problem with. I think we're going to find that we're dealing with zombie houses with raccoons and collapsed ceilings and no one up here is going to feel bad about enforcing that. But understanding there are scenarios where, you know, for whatever reason, we may want to exercise some judgment as a policy matter, I think it might be nice to just understand what the appeal process looks like and if there's an opportunity for this council to weigh in on those situations. We don't have to think through every permutation now. But otherwise, I appreciate all the work and I'd be in favor of moving forward and-
Do you want to talk to the, I mean, if we, if we moved to introduce tonight and then we could talk about that before we vote on it? Yeah, because I mean, that's-
Just understand what the enforcement and appeal process looks like.
Well, and I mean, the point of this whole thing is not to stand there with a cudgel and make people, you know, take care of their houses, but rather tools to help people, right?
Yeah.
So that would be completely in line with trying to assist people.
To provide a check and a balance.
Yeah, right. Thinking along those lines, in terms of the property maintenance, this has to do with buildings. Relative to things like standing water and stuff like that in people's property, where would that fall in?
I'm sorry.
You know, things like standing water, you know, like mosquito generators and, you know, decrepit fences that could be hazard, where would those fall in? Is that part of the property maintenance or is that coming a different place?
Some of it would be part of the property maintenance code. Again, we all, in terms of standing water, there's always the balance between when it's a heavy rain-
Right.
-period that we need to wait to see. But if you're talking about someone has a wheelbarrow out and they're letting water stand and it will approach down the-
I mean, as West Nile becomes more and more of a problem, right? Or, yeah, I mean, whatever.
Like the West, like the Blackthorn issue. I mean, where does the enforcement that the problems that those people have, where, what part of the code do you look to, to be able to go out there and appropriately enforce site conditions that are, that are problematic to the community?
Right, public health.
Where do you look?
The site conditions, well, right now, we look at the nuisance code.
Is it the nuisance code? Is it- Is it specific enough to address that?
No, it's very general.
So, I don't know if, I mean, again, I haven't dealt with any specific cases, but I don't know if that's, if we need to think about that. Again, this sort of goes to the whole, you know, conversation we're having.
But remember, the Blackthorn neighbors were here.
Yeah, right, and I can think of a couple other...
And they were really upset for good reason.
Right, right, exactly, and I can think of a couple other circumstances which could become problematic, right?
But the actual building code doesn't provide for those general condition issues?
No, the building code, no.
Right, right, so, again...
That's another thing to keep in mind.
And I think, as President Rince mentioned, this is a progression.
Yep.
So, the last code change implemented the commercial property maintenance code, and it hasn't been used too often, but when it's there, it's been very helpful. This is, you know, as mentioned, as David mentioned, based upon complaints.
Right.
It's not like we have the staff resources to go out and do windshield surveys all, you know, all the time. That's just not part of what we want to do.
And that's not the point, right, right.
But when you do have a severe property, having the tools available makes all the difference.
Right, exactly, and so, and as we're talking about, I just wanna make sure that we're thinking clearly, so...
So, guys, what do you want to do?
I would suggest that we move to introduce, and when we bring this up for the, which would be in June, for the final vote, that we have more conversation about the appeal, and if there's anything else anybody wants to talk about, that we throw it into the pot for conversation. Does that make sense?
Bob?
That's fine.
Andy?
Yeah.
Jack?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that sounds good. Well, what I would ask then is for everyone here, and please send out an email to the two missing trustees, 'cause you know, John loves this stuff, I mean, he lives in this world all the time, is they should, you know, forward questions to you or to David, you know, let's get a compiled list of issues and questions, so we can have it as part of the agenda and run through them and address them specifically as, before we vote, or, you know, maybe we modify it and pull it out at that time, because we're not getting the right answers. But if you guys can do a little homework in that respect and get it into here, we have two weeks, that's the beauty of it.
Okay. It's the semaphore language, isn't it?
And would there be a formal appeal process put into this process?
Well, there's already, with the model codes, there's already an appeal process that they can appeal a decision of the code official, it goes to what...
Hardship, I guess it was a hardship process more than...
So, the hard, just the hardship in terms of financially being able to address the issue.
And I do think it'll be helpful just to have a overview of the appeal process, which you were just starting to give, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, I mean, give us a little more meat on that subject, clearly. But the questions and stuff, I mean, if you guys, if you guys wanna read that code and come up with your concerns, I'd love to get it out so we can, we can deal with it rather than...
And to the question that was asked earlier this evening is, why do we have an introduction and then vote on the ordinance? This is why, right, there we go.
Right, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Jack, I mean, I don't mean to just, you know, dismiss your desire to have it as a study session, it's just that if you looked at the pipeline of what we have coming for the summer, it's almost embarrassing, because we have a lot of work to do, and I just, trying to find places to slot this into and not burn up all of our brain cells in the process is, is kind of the trick to this.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't know how to solve that. As I say, when I look at it, I look at it as a lawyer, as a, when I was an assistant state's attorney out in Dubauch County, this was the kind of stuff that would get into prosecutions by, as local people would fight it out. Oneica's not that kind of a place, so you're not gonna get that, but people here do get angry and they do hire lawyers. And so, I'm just, that was my concern. I'm not asking that it be derailed, I'm just saying that I think that, like we've been talking about, just maybe one more session to talk about the possible ramifications, so we understand it when we implement it, and then, you know, that can make it easier to give policy to the staff.
That works for me. So, okay. I'm gonna ask, does the audience have any comments or questions on this?
Debbie, you're all right?
Alan, you're okay with it? Okay. I'm more concerned with those two guys in the blue coats back there. They're usually where all the problems come from, so, and all the help when you need it, so, it comes with the territory. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back up here. Like to ask if we can have a motion to introduce ordinance number MC 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we got some homework for the next two weeks. Thank you. Item number 10, old business nun. Item number 11, new business. Colwell Banker, special use review, 564 to 68 Lincoln Avenue, ordinance number M10, 2017. Tonight, the council will hear an explanation from Colwell Banker on why it has not been operating a pop-up retail store in compliance with the special use permit it was granted in 2017. David is here again, he's busy tonight to review. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
David?
Yeah, so, just go over that in 2017, the applicant came before, excuse me, the village council requesting special permit approval. They were looking to expand their existing office, which is about, was about 8,000 square feet, into this yellow area on the slide, which is about 13,000, or 1,300 square feet. So, they were expanding into this space as a real estate office required special permit approval to move into that space. The council, after getting a recommendation from the plan commission by a vote of six to four of approval, when it got to the council, the council was split on the issue, and an idea was developed to have a pop-up retail area become part of this front area. And so, there were conditions put on this area, that that area was to be used for the display of retail goods, which could be viewed and directly purchased or ordered for delivery, that occupied, it should be occupied with goods available for purchase at all times, except for periods when there was a transition between vendors and for, and so, then also, when there wasn't a vendor in the space, the applicant agreed to display smart home technology products, or other luxury home-related products which would be available for purchase by the general public. They do have such a display, you can kind of see it through the reflection in the window there behind the sign, and they do have that display up. Minimum hours were established, the area needed to be staffed either by the vendor or the applicant's staff, and the applicant agreed to actively and continuously market the area and work with others to do that. Also, they would have to get approval from the design review board for any signage, and that the plan should include window signage to identify that vendors are located in the space. They did go before the design review board, and this window sign was approved, which hasn't been installed yet. The special use ordinance, as with all special use ordinance, contains a provision that if an applicant fails to comply, that the village council can revoke the special use permit. However, before you would start that process, you have to give the applicant two months' notice, and you have to state why you were planning to consider revoking it, and then to give the applicant an opportunity to be heard at a regular meeting. The applicant has provided some information, a chronology of events, including marketing efforts and tenants that have occupied this space. She describes how the space and furnishings have been set up to make it appealing to potential tenants, and she also then describes the challenges that they have been facing finding pop-up tenants. She can elaborate on that further this evening. So, options for the village council this evening would be, provide the applicant with additional time to bring the pop-up retail into compliance with the approved special use conditions. After hearing from the applicant, maybe there are revisions to the approved special use that the council and the applicant would find satisfactory, or you could direct staff to begin the necessary steps to revoke the special use permit. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions for David?
I feel like we've tortured him enough.
Yeah. I think we probably all would like to hear from the applicant, right? Penny?
Oh, I don't have any questions for David, no. Yeah, I'd love to, yeah. Thank you.
You guys, is that, come on up, Karen.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, first, obviously, nobody's more upset that I'm standing here again than I. And I obviously wanna thank you for giving us the opportunity to begin down this path. Progression is a good word, I've heard you use it a couple of times this evening, and that's sort of what we have experienced as we've gone through this process. Obviously, we know the progression, we got the agreement, and you guys were wonderful in December of 17, and we immediately started, well, not immediately, but almost immediately started work on the facility in January and worked like dogs to get it done by March 1st, which is what we had agreed to. And we did have a lineup of pop-ups fairly consistent in the first three months, three and a half months, and it did get progressively more difficult to find people to get in there. I unfortunately have discovered the difficulties, use your example, but lots of services want to come in and not as many retail spaces, or retail facilities. We've essentially had the space for ourselves to use from March 1st on, which is essentially a little under 15 months. In that time, we also had to take two months to renovate, to attach the space and make them work together. And so, really, we've had it for 12 to 13 months. In that time, we've had 18 vendors. Three of them are repeat vendors, and then we now have a, one that's not on the sheet, which is another person who's gonna take it actually for two months now, assuming you don't revoke it, but we'll see. And, you know, we've had to revise as we've gone along, we've learned along the way, you know, it's, my husband calls it, it's like Alexa, we're learning our way through this. It's not our primary business to do retail, we're trying to figure it out as we go, and we've appreciated the opportunity to try to do this. Couple of things that we've learned, we had to change our fee structure, and I'm addressing the questions that are on the thing, but not necessarily in that order. We've had to address the fee structure. We started with a fee, it was 500 for two weeks, in other words, 1,000 for the month, essentially, to rent the space. That worked moderately well, and we ended up with people who wanted us to prorate or do like two days or four days, and then we would end up with overlapping or underlapping timeframes, so we learned how difficult it is to factor the times of the various ones, 'cause somebody wanted to start on a Friday and they weren't finishing until Sunday, and so then they would push off to the next week or bow out entirely. We also ran into people who, we also learned that we had to collect the money upfront, 'cause people would secure the space and then not show up, and we would have turned away other people who were willing to take the space. These were all unfortunate trials and errors, but they did end up ultimately meaning we were not in compliance, unfortunately, as much as we would have liked to have been. I have to just acknowledge that, I can't deny that. We, I put the timeframe together, and yes, there are definitely big gaps, and there were times when they would be up front and then they would end up being really more in the back, and you wouldn't even see them, because they wanted their stuff not in the window. Don't know why, that was, you know, the clothes, some of the clothing ones. There were just, it's been a very interesting process, learning how to do this is the best thing I can say. Another thing we learned was how to market it to get people into the space. We started off, we did a couple of ads, we did, we marketed through the chamber. Michael, who was your predecessor, was helpful and got us a couple of people at the very beginning, but then, not, but beyond that. The chamber worked hard, but had a hard time with the money portion, people didn't wanna spend as much, so the next thing we learned was, we reduced the 500 to 250. We then reduced it to $100 for the week, to have 120-foot square foot, square foot space, and it is now free to have a 120-square-foot space in our space. We've been marketing it on, and I have that progression as well, it went down to $100 at the beginning of February, and it went down to free in the beginning of April, in part in compliance with the letters that we were receiving, just trying to get people in there. And we've gotten them in there, like right now, I've got a floral arrangement person in there, and, and that's, you know, is that a service or is that a retail? And so, those are the other things where we've tried to figure out the best ways to comply with it and, and walk that line. The other areas was marketing the vendors themselves was one of the questions, and having it look good, right? And we don't have our permanent, anything permanent in there, because we're trying to leave space open so that the vendors who come in can use the space in the windows to market their goods. We did actually have the asterisk sign up, and we took it down, it actually was up, for about, it's probably six or seven months. And we actually took it down, because the vendors didn't like that it was in the middle of the window and they couldn't put their signage up on the window. So, we ended up taking that down and putting a hanging thing up so that they could hang their signs from that, so that it wasn't on the window, so that we were somewhat in compliance with the signage requirements. It's kind of tricky, 'cause sometimes they're coming last minute. We also had somebody come out and put one of the sandwich board signs out, and I guess it was the one day somebody was walking around and gave us, gave us a fine for it. So, needless to say, we know we can't put signs out there that are sandwich boards, but we didn't know that before, now we know. We've had a couple people put balloons and planters in front with the balloons on them to try to get people in and interested, but that violates our courtyard rules with the people upstairs from us, so we've stopped doing that as well. So, it is difficult for us to get people promoted other than in our front window, and we're, we're, it's been a learning curve, is the best thing I can say, and we want to work with you, and we want to make this work. We truly have tried along the way, 18 vendors does speak to that. It has not been something, you know, that where we haven't tried to get people there. We'd love to continue to work with you, we'd love to continue to fill the space, we'd love to make it look better and work better with different signage somehow, that maybe it has something that's permanent up there, but could have a space that could be swapped out, where they could put their logos and stuff up in the middle, that was really much more geared to them. But we'd love, we know you went out on a limb for us, and we did not try to not be compliant, we've, I promise we've tried, and we will continue to try.
Thanks, Karen. Does anybody have questions, comments, or thoughts that they might wanna share with Karen?
So, Karen, if we looked ahead, say, for the next nine months, or till year end or whatever, what specifically are you going to try to do to fill the space up? I mean, what, you said what didn't work and so on.
Right.
What's the game plan if this was, you know, extended and so on?
Great question. So, I did some brainstorming on that myself. One thing is to try to get longer-term people in there, 'cause one of the things we also learned along this was that people did not like packing up all their wares and moving them in for a short term. They wanted to come for a longer term. And so, we've made it available for much longer terms. And so, Big Sky Handmade, I think I said that right, Big Sky Handmade has been here twice, and they have now signed up for all of June. and they have now signed up for all of June and July. I've also discovered August is almost impossible to fill. Nobody wants it. Nobody wants essentially the week before Christmas to essentially the first two weeks of January. It's just, it's, I may as well join the orthodontist and pull teeth. It's impossible. But as far as other things, and this is, I guess, where, when David said there's another possibility, and it's maybe a revision. There are several interior decorators who have suggested that they come and design the front space, and then we send them to them, and that they would almost do it on a rotating basis, where one comes in for the month and decorates the front, and another comes in the next month and decorates. That isn't, but it is a service, and I know that, but they also sell things just that wouldn't be retail in my office. So I don't know, but I have several who have asked me if they could use my space for that, and I've had to turn them away, because it doesn't comply with the retail component of it. But it would be much more beautiful to look at, for sure, as you guys are walking by or running by. And, and then, so one, one function is definitely, we're going to be aiming for trying to get people into the two months or one month ranges, so that they're, they're much more willing to commit to that. I will also say free was much more...
Inviting.
Halitable. Inviting to a lot of people. And that's been, we've put that out there on the mom spots on Facebook in the groups there, and we've put it out on Nextdoor, Glencoe and Nextdoor, Winnetka. In fact, we just posted another one, still trying to get August, and that has turned many more heads with the big free at it. So two of the big things we're trying to do is long-term and free, and then possibly bringing in, like, I'd love to work with the people upstairs to see if maybe they would be willing to have us help with the planters and have people bring, come in and put, you know, we've got Red Spade would love to be able to promote there by doing those planters and putting two planters in front of our door. And I know there's a couple of others that have talked to us about doing that kind of thing. So the answer is, we've got some other ideas out there, and some of the other brokers have some other ideas that they've thrown at me, but I think changing the model, we're finally getting closer to what I think's going to work.
Are there brokers for pop-up retail?
No. Nowhere.
No.
You're looking at her.
Right.
No, I wish. I actually did look that up, and one of the things that we started down the path with was there's a woman in town who actually did offer to try to help me initially to do this, and she found it so frustrating, she just abandoned it.
That she couldn't find any, any, okay.
Flowered Apron is a nonprofit, right?
It is.
It is. So is there any appetite, ha-ha?
Nice pun.
You know, with, with other nonprofits. Again, now that it's free, I was going to say, you know, you could offer it for free, but...
Right.
In terms of trying to promote, and I don't know, again, if there's anything that Village or the township or anything could do to help with outreach, but, you know, it, it is a new model, and I mean, there are all sorts of things. It sounds like we really need to have sort of a brainstorming session, really.
Well, it's kind of like, honestly, I would love to propose to come in with more people and truly brainstorm it, because I do think, I still believe, I think it was a great idea.
Yeah.
And I'm not taking credit for that idea, but I think it's a great idea, and I really do believe that this can work. It's just, it's a lot more difficult than I think I or anybody else anticipated it being to find those people. They don't want to spend the money. They don't want to pack up their wares, and they definitely want longer-term...
Right.
Than we ever thought. We actually thought pop-up meant pop-up.
Yeah, right. Right, right, right.
Right. I mean, just sort of, and I've reached out to the Kashmir people, you know, who were there when they were here, and talked to them. We're too small for them.
Right.
So I said, do you have anybody else? So I've been working with her to see if she knows other people that would want to be in there, and that's actually how I got Mott fifty.
Got it. Because, you know, in terms of expanding the concept and in terms of what is it that we want to accomplish for the village, I mean, really, I mean, kind of thinking, and what we're looking for is foot traffic and things that generate community, and I mean, if, if we're not tied to just retail services, would this be an opportunity to promote local entrepreneurs in terms of showcasing services, you know, for a short period of time or whatever? So...
In a gallery...
Yeah, I mean, it seems like there's, yeah, or a gallery space.
Yeah, and I had one of those in there, too.
It seems like there's a lot of different things that we could talk about. Yeah, and, and maybe could help us as we're kind of floundering through all of this with other, you know, other C2 overlay or, you know, other, other spaces in our commercial district.
Created uses.
Right. I don't know. How, how would we go about, just having a time to talk and expand?
We could take it on to one of our...
Our stormwater.
Because I don't think it would be as long of a, well, if it's going to be a workout...
I'm just joking. I was just joking.
Maybe we could put a little committee aside, and you guys could go in the back room and talk about this, and bring us some ideas.
Just, yeah, because it's, I don't think we're going to be able to resolve it this evening, but...
No, I, you know, it, I'm going to let you guys keep it.
No, I mean, that's, I, I just, I mean, I think that this was, this is an experimental notion. I don't, I don't, I don't feel competent tonight to say yea or nay, and I don't know. So ideas? I, any comments?
Any thoughts on the other side over here?
Yeah, I think you need a better plan moving forward, one that won't be equivalent to being tortured.
I'm all for that.
And I think it might be torture if we try to suggest businesses. So, yeah, you know, I, I appreciate you coming in and the thought that you've put in. It does strike me that if we just send you out and say, keep trying the same thing, we'd be a little crazy to expect different results. That's why I think a better plan moving forward, one that's achievable, one that is, you know, understanding the realities of your business and your staffing. One of the things I recall is there was sort of an idea for some default products, whether they're home security or whatever. Strikes me that it, something to think about is, is there a better default option that you can have, whether it's a gallery for nutrile or whatever it is? And then the true pop-up happens during the key times, because, you know, the thing about pop-ups is, and the thing about this kind of space is, if people don't, if it's not perceived to be a constantly open space, people aren't looking for it, right? Unless there's something that drives them to it, like the Music Fest or, or the Christmas holiday shopping season, and so I, I think it's worth thinking about that. Let's not send you out...
I'm taking notes. I'm not being disrespectful.
Let's not send you out, and let's not have a perpetual cycle of frustration, but let's have a plan that's achievable. I appreciate the effort. I think there has been a real effort to take a first shot at the initial concept. I think it needs to be revised. So I, I wouldn't want to see us do anything more tonight than have this conversation and then...
I agree.
Yeah. So, thank you, though.
Can I, can I throw out a proposal as well?
Sure.
Because I love that. I like that, I, I mean, I want a plan.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm refining it as we're going, because I'm not in retail and never was. I can sadly say I never worked retail. So learning this as I've gone, I feel like I've learned a lot, whether I wanted to be tortured or not. And, you know, it's, I still think it's a doable thing, not necessarily the way we originally wrote it up to be, and so I'd love to work with you to revise, and maybe I'll put forth a proposal and work with one or two of your, send it to you, and see if you think that's doable and where I can go with that, but keep going. I just, I liked that idea.
Yeah. That's all I had. I've got a flight in a few hours to New York.
Oh, I won't keep you going. Sorry.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll wrap it up. You know, Karen, you know, we went out on a limb...
Yes, you did.
And you know that the, the approval was, was controversial, and there's nothing worse than, than getting behind an idea and then getting publicly humiliated for it when it doesn't work out. And that could be said of you, and it can be said of us, because I think we've all heard from those that are really concerned about real estate office and their place in, in our town center, and you know it. I mean...
I live it every day.
And, but yet, there you are, you know, commitment made to, to at least help us maintain the spirit of, of what our overlay district means, and, and I think, you know, I'll admit, my frustration has just been one of communication, you know? I, and you know I go by every day.
I know.
So I, I keep very good track of what's going on all over town. It's the good news and the bad news, kind of, you know? But, but the reality of it is, is that, you know, I was really frustrated with the fact that I left multiple notes, and whether they got lost in the office, there was just no dialogue.
Right.
You know, so at some point, you feel like you're out there hanging on, blowing in the breeze, when you supported something as a, as a group through the village council, and then we can't even get, you know, adequate response back, and, and that's the key thing here. I mean, when you agreed to do this, you agreed to, you know, become a partner with village council in trying to reimagine how our downtown is going to operate, and to that effect, we gave you twelve hundred square feet of space that you normally wouldn't be entitled to. And, you know, we thought it was a fair deal when we voted on it. I mean, I'm not sure if all of us really loved it, but we thought it was a way to at least accommodate somebody who has proven to be a real contributor to the community over the years, and we recognize that. But I think, I think we do need to maintain the dialogue, and, you know, just the stuff that came up tonight, whether it's a designer or an art installation, I mean, there's artists all over the place that just want to get their stuff out in public. I mean, it would, it would liven the space up, and, and the frustration for me personally, as a resident of this town, is walking by every day, and then knowing that, you know, I did the math today. If you think about it, that soap person, what is, is that Big Sky?
No, that's just jewelry is Big Sky. She's Grandma's, mm...
Fanny's.
Grandma Fanny. Thank you.
But, you know, you're like the soap lady, and I'm, and I'm starting to do the math. I'm going, okay, two fifty a week, so she has to sell, you know, twenty-five bars of ten-dollar soap every week just to break even, and that made no sense to me. And I was disappointed to hear about this, this arrangement with the chamber where people could get a better deal if they joined the chamber, and that to me just didn't, at least that's what I heard from the folks at the chamber, that there was a deal that they could get better rent if they were members of the Chamber of Commerce, which didn't feel real good to me. I, to be honest with you, I don't think any of us thought that you would be renting the space for cash.
Well, it was for charity. I want to be very clear. It was a charitable donation to our charitable foundation, not cash.
Right.
And so it was a write-off for them, just, just so that everybody understands. It was not cash profit to our office. It was truly on it a charitable contribution, and they got a charitable notice.
Well, it's great. That's the sort of thing we'd expect from Caldwell Banker.
Well, that is what we did. I just, but I want you to know, it was definitely...
Nine thousand two hundred feet of space in the center of our downtown.
It was, yeah, it was not, we were not taking money.
Okay.
So I do want to be very clear about that. That was, that we never took a dime.
And, and it is good to clarify that.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I mean, it's, that's a big amount of money for a very small opportunity, and, you know, the math just doesn't work. I'm glad to hear that now that this is the sort of thing that's going to be made available. Obviously, you're, you know, you'll have to do some vetting to make sure that you get people that you're comfortable with having in the front of your, your office space, but, you know, the key thing is to keep the lines of communication open, so we don't feel ignored and disrespected.
Sorry. I apologize.
And that's probably the most important thing, is we've had this discussion up here on several occasions, and, you know, it's, we don't want to have to drag people into the council chambers to have conversations. They're easy enough conversations to have by you just popping in in public comment and saying, hey, council, here I am, very beginning. And you know, the cool thing was, is if you do that, you would have been out of here two hours ago. You would have been out of here two hours ago.
You're saving.
Hey, I got a new, I've got a new art installation, and this is what's going on. You know, it would take five minutes of your time, and you'd be out of here by ten after seven at the very latest. And so, you know, we've tried to make this accessible, so it's, so it's, it's built for good communication, and we just want to make sure that we continue that dialogue with you, so that we have something that's successful. The last thing we want to do is deal, try to navigate changing or removing a special use permit that's already been granted. I mean, we don't have time for it.
No, nobody wants to do that.
So...
We want to make it work.
Right.
We want to make it work with you.
So I'll tell you what, I'm going to reach out to, to a couple trustees and see if they'd like to sit down with you guys and just maybe come back with a report. I think Penny, you seem like you have some passion for it, and you know Ann would. So maybe, maybe we just do a little, a little work session, and, and then they can come back and just share with us what sort of things you brainstormed about.
I'd appreciate it.
Is that, sound like it would work? I mean, we're all neighbors here.
Yeah, you brought up also some other issues that I think affect all the retailers, so, you know, which would probably...
No, I think it would be, I, I think communication, brainstorming, trying to work together, going for, working together, not trying. Working together, making it happen, is where we want to be.
And you are actually just nothing but a big retailer. You know that.
We could go with that.
You're the biggest of retailers, okay, so...
We provide a lot to retail.
So, okay, well, well, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
And sorry to make you wait to the end, but you were new business.
It's okay. It was punishment. It's all good.
We don't punish here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And Penny, I'll reach out.
We all good?
Okay. Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pat, why don't you come on up and share your thoughts? I'm sorry. I'm trying to get Andy off on a plane, so...
They'll hold it for me. It's fine.
Patricia Balsamo, a longtime resident of Winnetka. I'm speaking as a resident now. My background is in fashion marketing and retailing, and I have watched with great interest in the progress, or lack of it, in this Caldwell Banker thing, because pop-up stores are very difficult to work with, and I would suggest, if I might, that you get in touch with the marketing department of one of the universities around here and see what young, eager minds might contribute as a project. And that would, one of the things that they should contribute is what Andy Kreip mentioned earlier, they've got to have a marketing plan. I think it's very hard for retail, for real estate people to, to make that kind of a transition, because it's, fashion marketing is a tricky business. I've co-authored several college texts on this and on consumer behavior and fashion marketing, and I, I just see this as an opportunity to get with the intellectual community and really come up with something very special, so I hope you will take that suggestion.
Thanks, Pat. That's actually a really good idea. See, it might have been worth sticking around all night just for that one idea. So, thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I would love that. Classic car shower. Full smoke.
Yeah, it's a great idea. And we have some fantastic universities that are very close that might be interested in jumping in on something like that. Last item of the evening, I have an appointment. This is to reappoint Chuck Douding as chair of the Environmental and Forest Commission for another term, and I just want to quickly explain. I spoke with Chuck, given the fact that, that all of the, all of our advisory committees are going to be, you know, have projects in motion relative to the comp plan, I asked Chuck to stay on and help guide the EFC through that process, and he agreed to stick around as kind of the, the resource of, of a long-term assignment to help kind of formulate the EFC's concepts that'll be, be sent over to the Plan Commission, first to us and then to the Plan Commission. So may I have a motion to reappoint Chuck as chair of the Environmental and Forestry Commission?
So moved?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, closed session there is done, none, and item fourteen, adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, closed session there is done. None. And item 14, adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn? Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.